At this time, excuse me, this time I would like to call our meeting to order. Today is October the 11th, Tuesday, October the 11th, 2022. This is our regularly scheduled school board meeting. And so certainly we want to welcome each and all of you here tonight. We want to welcome you and thank you for taking time out of your busy schedules to come and be with us tonight. And so at this time, we're going to turn it over to Mr. Cullen for our impact student recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Ackland and members of the board tonight. Ms. Heather Kendrick is going to help us honor our impact student for the district.
Yes, good evening, everyone. It is my great pleasure to introduce you to our October impact student, Ms. Amani Tate.
Hi, I'm Amani Tate. I'm in fourth grade and I go to Adelbert Elementary School. I like to go outside and sometimes roller skate. I want to one day write a little book about school or something, probably about all my friends and how I was like in fourth grade or something. It's a really good school and all the teachers here are really nice.
What is your favorite thing about school?
My teacher.
Okay, can you tell me about your teacher?
She's really loud and I like how energetic she is.
Amani Tate is absolutely amazing. I call her my rock star in my classroom. She's always doing what she needs to do. She's like my little teacher assistant helper. She's respectful. She is so hardworking and she is one of those kids that you want in your classroom.
Would you all please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and the visible liberty of justice for all.
Great job, Amani. We're going to give you this. I'm going to take your picture of who's to call. All right, one, two, three. Perfect. Thank you so much. Let's have one more round of applause, please, for Ms. Amani Tate.
Thank you, board, members of the audience. Before we proceed with our meeting, if you would, please join me in a moment of silence. This past weekend, we had a very tragic event in our community. We'd like to lift up the Bartholomew family, so please join me in a moment of silence Mr. Ackland, at this time, give you the consent agenda for consideration.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cullen. Board, at this time, we have our consent agenda. A lot of the different items that are on here, we've already had an opportunity to go over. I just want to make sure, does anyone have any questions? If there are no questions, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. You a second? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it. All right, at this time, we are at a point in our agenda where we're going to continue our patron comments. And so if I've said it once, I'll say it again, this board is always willing to listen. And so when different concerns come up, different issues come up, we're willing to listen to our community. And so that's what we're doing tonight. And so with that being said, we're going to ask that our first patron, Cal Paulson, I hope I had that, I hope I pronounced her name right.
Thank you, board. Thank you, Mr. McCollum. And yes, you pronounced my name correctly. I'd like to do an opening statement, and it starts with Governor Kaye Ivy and the Alabama State Legislature are proactively creating legislation to stop the LGBT community from dismantling proper gender identities. The enacted law, SB 184, goes further banning gender life-altering surgeries on teens. The bill would make it a felony for parents and medical professionals to provide gender-affirming medical care, such as puberty blockers, hormones, and surgery, to people 18 and under in the state of Alabama. The presiding judge in the case, Lyle C. Burke, on April 29th, 2022, he ruled that there would be no temporary injunction of the intended law at this time. It became law on Mother's Day, 2022. Governor Ivy goes on to say, and I quote, "We should especially protect our children. Let us all focus on helping them to properly develop into the adults God intended them to be." Currently, there are 18 state legislatures considering similar laws. Conservative state lawmakers have introduced at least 238 anti-LGBT bills in 2022 alone. The question is, are they wrong? In my prepared statement, I would like to say that the LGBT community has suppressed the truth about God. They seek to bring their judgment against everyone who does not agree with their gender values. They do this in order to get you to support their self-centered lifestyles. In Scripture, God's righteousness has been revealed, and so has His wrath. They substitute the truth about God with a fantasy of their own imaginations. God chose to reveal Himself not only in nature, but through the Scriptures and Jesus Christ. God has made certain facts about Himself known instinctively. They, the LGBT, knows the truth, and they will have to endure the consequences of ignoring it. To forget to thank God for all He is and all He has done reveals a dangerous self-centeredness. The LGBT community is seeking heroes among themselves who claim to be wise. They seek the weak-minded of this world or the personal gainsayers, such as lawyers, psychologists, family planners, and others who support their perverse causes. They call all who are not like them racist. They who refuse to believe in God are utter fools. Today, the few are trying to indoctrinate the parents and the many adolescents and teens with their selfish plans and decrees. This is not just about bathroom usage, it is about the future. These are yet children and babes in the eyes of God. Our children may be the last stronghold of purity yet unblemished. The LGBT minority are introducing the reality of their sexual impunity onto others. This minor community has been left to their own ruinous moral practices. They are without God. They are without His righteousness. Their end is utter destruction. The LGBT's desire to produce another generation of like-minded... Today, it is about bathrooms; tomorrow, about sickening lifestyle changes. The proof for this is found in Romans 1, verses 24 through 32. "God gave them over to be a sinful desires of their hearts to sexual impunity for the endangering of their bodies with one another." In Romans 1:26, because of this, God gave them over to shameful lusts. Even their women exchanged natural sexual relations for unnatural ones. In Romans 1:27, it says, "In the same way the men also abandoned natural relations with women and were inflamed with lust one for another." Men committed shameful acts with other men and received in themselves a due penalty for their error. God gave them over to a depraved mind so that they do what they should not be done. They invent ways of doing evil. But let me remind you that those who do such things deserve death. The LGBT community not only continues to do these very things, but also approves of those who practice them. And let me end by saying that God loves everyone. He even loves those of the LGBT community, but He doesn't like their practices or their moral standards. The penalty for that decision is spiritual death. If you remain in that cycle of practice, and it becomes a way of life, does not become a way of life, God will accept you, and His whole love will be with you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Paulson. At this time, we're going to ask that Kaye Durham, if you would please come forward.
I was unaware that I wasn't going to be onstage, so I had like handouts, so I guess I'll deal with that afterwards. But good afternoon, I am Kaye Durham, a sophomore at Conway High School, but more importantly, I am a transgender student, and this policy is not only targeting transgender students, but this policy is targeting transgender kids. The very nature of this policy is dehumanizing and discriminatory. I would like to remind people who this policy is affecting and why. I would like to bring into consideration mental health, academic success, and bring this into consideration since this policy will continue to create a transphobic environment. Academic success is to achieve good grades, a good GPA, a good SAT or ACT. How would transphobia affect grades? The two don't have any correlation with each other. However, what connects them is a student. The student who tries their best to get good grades, but their teacher uses the wrong pronouns, which in turn causes public humiliation. This causes distrust. Then the student doesn't learn because they're terrified. A teacher who constantly disrespects them is going to make them feel uncomfortable and undermines the learning environment. Now, most teachers at this school are amazing, and I love and I am grateful for all my teachers this year. However, the next problem when trying to achieve academic success is bullying. I have personally dealt with bullies, and it can ruin the classroom environment. I've had to deal with people who say slurs within a class, and believe me, it does not want to make students learn. It can not only cause a distraction, but make those who the slur affects feel uncomfortable and thus them not participating in class. This will negatively impact academic success. For those who are more logical in their decision-making, let me share with you a few numbers. After the last board meeting, I launched a petition. 481 people signed the petition. If 481 people sign my petition, that is 24.25% of the school. Now, when looking at it, that may not be a whole lot, but let's put this into perspective. If we assume there are about 25 students per class, that's one student per 19 classes. Is that a trans or an ally? At least one student who's been mocked, at least one student who has silently dealt with the problem. Now, if this statistic doesn't mean anything to you, you might say, well, just use a single use, or you might think it's not that big of a deal. I mean, how much could it hurt someone? Number one, we need to address that a student and a parent would have to go and talk, then get a signed paper from their counselor. And here's why that's hard. What if your parents not accepting? What if your parents are too busy? There are so many what-ifs, I'm going to save time and I'm not going to list them all. To provide some national statistics and trigger warning for some people for suicide and mental illness. According to the National Library of Medicine, a government website states, 82% of transgender individuals have considered killing themselves, and 40% attempt suicide with suicidality highest among transgender youth. So now, let's apply that. Let's take 40% of our 481 who signed the petition and list divided by two, since half were non-trans. 97 students is how many would have attempted suicide. This issue is much more beyond signing a paper and putting in the handbook. It will continue to perpetuate a transphobic environment. And as someone who has dealt with suicidal thoughts and depression, I would like to ask, is it worth it? Is it worth it, implementing this policy at the risk of students' livelihood? As history shows, in the face of oppression, the first thing to happen is separation. Example, look at the Jewish people and mentally ill people. History has shown that that can happen. Every action has a consequence. Every decision you make affects someone. Do not let that decision hinder someone's education, hinder someone's ability to live, hinder their ability to be who they are. Thank you for those who signed my petition, and thank you for allowing me to speak, and conveniently, happy National Coming Out Day. Also, I have an email that I sent to all of you that has my petition on it, so you can go and check the signatures.
At this time, we're going to ask that Ms. Tammy Marsh, if you would please come forward.
I made copies for all of you, and like the student said, I'll just leave it right My name is Tammy Marsh. I taught school for 21 years, 10 of which were here at my alma mater. I'm a 1986 graduate of Conway Public Schools, and both of my sons graduated here in 2015 and 2019. My love for being a Whoppers Cat is deep and true. I've watched as not only our city has grown tremendously, but also our school district. I want Conway to remain one of the best school districts in the state. I want our city to remain a top contender for families looking to move here, and I'm well aware that this is due largely to the public school system that we have. I was here last month and sat silently in the audience, then read the news articles that came about as a result. I want to make the record clear that what was reported about the board members in some of those articles was both untrue and completely biased. Some were merely an editorial article full of personal opinion that whipped up hate. My years as a journalism student in this district taught me that reporting should be accurate and true and unbiased. As a district, we are sitting on the edge of a place from which we cannot return. We must be mindful of the impact this policy decision will have on every decision to come in the future. I pray for the board members and the district administration, as well as the teachers in their classrooms. We are suffering a national teacher shortage like we have never known, and it is as crucial to our success as a global power as anything else can be. It may, in fact, be the most critical factor of all. Teachers are our greatest resource for the future, second only to our children. The children who are to be directly impacted by your decision here are the ones that will lead our future when we are all old and gone. We must model for them how to navigate not only responsible adulthood, but also difficult and contentious situations such as this. We cannot do that if we cannot be respectful of other perspectives. Many people who sit here tonight, as well as those within our community at large, believe that the board's proposed policy to accommodate students with gender concerns is the most appropriate resolution for all students. It does not single students out, it gives them options. These policies will not force any students to use the bathroom or stay overnight in a situation that makes them uncomfortable. They spoke last month and still speak out about not being singled out and excluded. Instead, they seek inclusivity and acceptance, what all children, as well as adults, seek. When I taught, I would always see such different personalities in my classrooms and in the hallways. We have students with strong outgoing personalities of all different types. They demand attention just by their presence. I mean that in the most positive way. I was that student. If you know me, you know that I'm that adult as well. We just are who we are, but the ones who always touched my hearts, the ones I worried about within the walls of my classroom and school, were the vanilla kids. These are the ones who were not strong personalities and did not demand attention. The ones who sat quietly in class, the ones who did not get in trouble for talking too much. Thousands of these children are in our district schools. These are the children we must consider as well. These are the children that will be uncomfortable if these policies are not in place, yet they won't say much, even to their own parents. It is not in their nature to be controversial. However, they will be directly affected if they cannot feel comfortable using the bathroom or going on an overnight school trip. Is it right for these students to feel excluded? What accommodations do these students have? They cannot go to another bathroom. They would be singled out asking for a different overnight room situation. If these policies are not passed, who will police the bathroom and overnight situations? Our teachers? As it stands, aren't we already asking as much of them as is humanly possible? Our teachers are stretched so thin trying to get our children caught up from the far-reaching effects of two years of pandemic education. Teacher retention and teacher shortage is a real crisis, and without these policies in place, we're expecting them to also supervise bathroom and overnight situations, situations that are not in the best interest of all students. As a student at Conway High, the very best US government and legal systems teacher taught us that our individual rights stop where another person's begin. That is the crux of this issue, and I believe the board has a duty to be courageous for our children and pass the policies for the thousands of vanilla kids who won't speak out for all students of Conway Public Schools.
All right, thank you, Ms. Marsh. This time, we will have Chris Thomason.
My name is Chris. I am a resident, have been a resident of Conway for over 25 years now, and we are, you know, a lot of people that have come up here and have spoke have made a lot of good points. You know, they've said good things about our schools, which are true. We are blessed with great teachers, great administration. I'm a parent of three kids. I've got three children, and all three of them, from elementary to high school, we have experienced Conway Public Schools. From the principals to the teachers, to the custodians, to the food service workers, I mean, every experience that we've had has been amazing, and we are truly blessed to have what we have here at Conway Schools. I wanted to, you know, come here tonight. Before last month, I'd never been to a school board meeting, never have. You know, I'm sure a lot of people here haven't as well. But, you know, with this issue going on, it's important, obviously. This affects everybody, and it is contentious, but I wanted to speak on behalf of my children and on behalf of what I believe a lot of other fathers out there feel as well. First of all, thank you, board members, for proposing this and for hopefully voting on this tonight. I can't imagine what the last month has been like for some of you that support this, some of the things that you've heard, and I just wanted to give you an encouragement tonight and just know that, yes, you are doing the right thing. As a dad of three children, thank you for what you're doing. You know, I've heard a lot of people say that, you know, talking to them, that maybe, you know, this is really not necessary, there's not really much of this going on in Conway. Like I just said, we've got great teachers and principals and that kind of thing, so why even do this? The truth is, the reason why is, there's really three reasons. You know, you look around and you see what's going on, it's coming, right? We've got to draw a line in the sand, and we've got to say, okay, are we for this or against this? Is this something that we're going to allow or not? And I've got two daughters, and I, you know, the idea of a boy coming into the restroom with my daughter just doesn't sit well as a dad. I understand what that... You know, I can appreciate what kids are struggling with, like the kid that spoke up here. I applaud them for having the courage to come up here and speak to you. That takes a lot of guts to do what they did, and I appreciate them voicing their opinion. But I hope that they understand that I don't want a boy in the bathroom with my daughter. I don't. So anyway, I just wanted to give you guys encouragement. I hope that you guys make the choice to approve these proposals. And my true hope is also that, you know, it's my understanding that there is no other school in Arkansas that has policies like this. So if we pass this tonight, Conway Schools will be the very first school in Arkansas to have policies like this, and it's because we've never needed them. You know, up until recently, we've never needed something like this. And just, we're on a slippery slope right now, guys, and just to show that, let me take you back in time, way, way back to 2008, just 14 years ago. There was a presidential election going on then, and the Democratic nominations got whittled down to two people, Barack Obama and Hillary Clinton. Everybody kind of knows them as, you know, representing the left wing of the political aisle, you know, they're very supportive of LGBT issues, that sort of thing. But what you may not know, many people don't realize, is that both of them, both Barack and Hillary, were very vocally supportive on many occasions of traditional marriage. They both said that marriage is a union between one man and one woman, a sacred union between one man and one woman, and they vocally opposed gay marriage. That was just 14 years ago, and here I am as a dad standing up here 14 years later saying, please don't let boys come and use the bathroom with my daughters. What are we going to be talking about 14 years from now if we don't take a stand now? So I encourage you to, please vote for these, and I appreciate y'all doing that, and my hope is that other schools will see what Conway has done, they'll get courage as well, and that we'll see this continue to go, and people will take a stand for what is right and for what is true. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomason. At this time, we're going to ask that Dwayne Minor, if you would please come to the podium.
Hello, my name is Dwayne Minor. I'm the pastor of Victory Baptist Church here in Conway. I want to thank the school board for allowing me to speak tonight and also thank them for putting forward these proposals. At the last board meeting, there was a question asked that I pondered for a significant amount of time. The question was, why now? It was said from the stage and also out in the auditorium with others that I spoke with. That question, when answered, helps us to see that we are not just discussing where someone should urinate or be allowed to stay on overnight trips, and I hope to be able to focus attention on the big picture as we discuss the issues. The turmoil in education and what has been seen here in Conway is part of a change. This is happening now because two incompatible views of the world are going to battle, and education is at the center of this. The society we live in was built by people who viewed the world as having an order and meaning that we were required to as human beings to discover and conform ourselves to. Within that meaning and order, we seek to understand how the world operates and to do greater and greater things. Here in America, our understanding of humanity has been handed down to us from Christianity. That's not to say everything that the West has done or America has done is Christian, but that the view of the world that undergirds us comes from Christian ideals. And that understanding is simple, that God created human beings and gave them dignity by creating them in His image. He created men and women, and He outlined how we are to come together for humanity to flourish. And this ethic was embraced by founders of this country, even those that were not believers, and this led to the many great blessings that we live in today. Simply put, the order of the world and how best to live in it is fixed, and we are to conform to it, and by doing so, we will be well ordered, we're prepared to flourish as adults. And this view of society that we've built upon has led to the flourishing we have today. The other side views the world as malleable, and this view, the individual defines meaning, and all the world is to be conformed to this individual. For instance, what we discussed today, if a person feels within their self that they need to use the restroom of the opposite gender to be happy, then all the world is to conform to their feelings. The view our society was built upon simply saw education as passing the baton down from one generation to the next. People were taught to flourish within the bounds that the Lord had set over the world. This is the only reasonable way to educate children and the only reasonable way to organize a school district. And the view that is opposed to this, the new way, will destroy the foundations our society was built upon and that has led to prosperity. Learner's lavatories and pornography for pupils are educational matters. Regulations and rules teach something to everyone within the district. If a restroom policy states that biological males can use the restroom at their choice based on their innermost feelings, then it teaches pupils that the order of the world is not fixed and is to be conformed to their whims. It attempts to chip away at the order of the world and will not lead to the flourishing of our society or our city. Where we reject that order that the Lord has placed in the world, we run headlong into a brick wall. For instance, in Loudoun County High School, students were allowed to use the restroom that they felt deep inside was the one for them, and there, a male was found guilty of sexually assaulting a female in a women's restroom. Allegedly, he claimed to be gender fluid, and court documents showed that he was wearing a skirt when the assault took place. Received wisdom from those that have gone before us never would have allowed for this sort of thing to take place, because we once understood that the universe was ordered a certain way, and we made decisions based upon that rather than fighting against it. This same thing can be seen in any number of issues that schools must deal with now. Pornographic books in libraries were mentioned in the last meeting and are up on the docket today. When these books are allowed in a district, their presence teaches that the contents within them are good, right, and beautiful. It seeks to tear down what has brought flourishing to our city and our society. The pronoun discussion is another part of this. Must the whole world bend to the feelings of the individual, or must the individual be taught that there's a standard that exists outside of them that they are to conform to? Simply put, the new way is a rejection... Simply put, the new way is a rejection of the old, it is a way of tearing down the foundations of our societal well-being. I am for the changes proposed by the school board, but this is an argument for much more than that. It's an argument for bringing students up in Conway based on the wisdom of the ages that has been passed down to us. So we have a choice, you have a choice. And it is a choice between building upon the stable foundation of the past that helps students to live within God's created order and flourish, or to attempt to lead the district and the students that are educated here into chaos. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Minor. At this time, we want to ask Ali Welke.
Thank you. Ever since I heard that two books were being challenged at Conway Junior High, I've been writing this response in my head. I put it down on paper, along with a few other thoughts, in hopes that I can communicate what I've learned over the years about books and what they mean to people. I have a bachelor's degree in English and a master's degree in English literature. The master's is from UCA, here in Conway. I've lived in this community for 20 years now, and I have a son at the high school and a daughter at the junior high. I'm proud to have gotten my library card at the Faulkner County Library the same month I moved here. My family and I have checked out and read hundreds of books in the ensuing two decades. I recently requested the two books in question, checked them out, and spent a weekend reading them both. The fiction book in question, Felix Ever After, is a very typical young adult book, in that it deals with a teen character's relationship with friends, parents, teachers, and romantic interests. Felix had already transitioned to live as a boy before the story started, although he is still exploring his feelings about his gender and place in the world. His mom has left his father, and has left Felix too, and his father is still coming to terms with raising the son he has instead of the daughter he thought he had. Felix has a drafts folder in his email in which he pours out his heart and notes to his mom that he never sends, as the first one he sent after she left went unanswered. Felix spends a lot of time with his best friend Ezra, and they eventually become more than friends after they both have failed relationships with others, including a boy who traumatizes Felix by putting up pictures of him before his transition. The teens in the book use some substances and make some bad decisions, there is a bit of sexual content. But these kids also take hard looks at the world and their place in it. They have hopes and dreams for the future, and heartbreaks too. Felix eventually deletes all those email drafts to his mother, and show kindness and humanity toward one another. I was glad to have walked in Felix's shoes through the story, and I found myself thinking about him and his journey long after I closed the book. The nonfiction book, Beyond Magenta: Transgender Teens Speak Out, offers first-person accounts from six transgender teens, whose experiences vary from being in inclusive and welcoming families and environments, to navigating foster care and predatory abusive adults. It looks very frankly at the struggles families go through in trying to understand the teen who is questioning their birth gender and deciding to make a transition to live the life they believe is theirs. As with Felix, I found myself thinking about these kids for a long time after reading their accounts, and wishing the road they were on could contain fewer sharp stones and unexpected turns. Frankly, it is hard to see the proposed banning of these particular books that deal with transgender issues alongside the proposed policies that police where non-genderconforming kids can go to the bathroom, as anything other than an attack on these kids, these vulnerable kids, who instead desperately need our support and understanding. Instead of banning books, or others, these books or others like them, I would instead recommend people take the time to read them and talk to the teens in their lives about them. The purpose of art of all kinds is to give us windows into the thoughts and experiences of others, as we get only one life. But literature allows us to walk in other's shoes for a while. After taking that walk through books such as these, how can we condemn people for seeking the person they truly are, the life they want to live? All of us benefit by learning more about others' journeys. I trust librarians, professionals with years of training on finding resources with value to students, to build collections on their shelves that will take readers on journeys toward empathy and understanding. These two books belong on the shelves, for kids who see themselves and their own experiences in the subject matter, and for kids who don't, but who might come to understand what another kid is going through. I'm completely comfortable with both of my kids having access to these books in their school libraries, and a lot of fellow parents I know feel the same way. Along with trusting librarians, I also trust teachers to do what they are trained to do, give students the knowledge they need to navigate life. Kids need to know real history, warts and all, of the country they live in, which includes topics like slavery and the many struggles over the years for civil rights for all kinds of people. We need readers and critical thinkers, now more than ever. My kids both started kindergarten in Conway Schools, and my son is now in his senior year. Through the years, I've always believed that the administrators and educators and staff have their best interests at heart, and I want to continue to believe that, which is why I'm here today. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Welke. At this time, we'll have Ms. Janice Lehman.
Good evening. My name is Janice Lehman, and my pronouns are she, her, hers. I'm in my 35th year as an educator and administrator. I am a cisgender heterosexual ally. I was at the last school board meeting, and it was apparent to me that many on the board were not familiar with terms associated with the LGBTQ+ community. I know there are several advocates, allies, and members of the LGBTQ community in this room who would welcome the opportunity to share their knowledge and experiences with you at some point, if you're interested. In regards to policy 4.20, Use of Bathrooms Affected by Gender, I want to share some statistics with you. These come from the Journal of Adolescent Health, Volume 68, Issue 6, pages 1142 to 1147, published on December 4, 2020. Using data from a quantitative cross-sectional survey of transgender non-binary youth ages 13 to 24 years, they examined the association between experiencing bathroom discrimination and depressive mood, seriously considering suicide, and attempting suicide. Fifty-eight percent of transgender non-binary youth reported being prevented or discouraged from using a bathroom that corresponds with their gender identity. Among the transgender non-binary youth who experienced bathroom discrimination, 85% reported depressive mood, and 60% seriously considered suicide. One in three transgender non-binary youths who experienced bathroom discrimination reported a past-year suicide attempt, with one in five reporting multiple suicide attempts. These findings suggest that preventing transgender non-binary youths from accessing appropriate bathrooms is associated with harmful mental health indicators. Addressing the suicide disparities for transgender non-binary youths requires structural change. Policies and procedures need to be in place to ensure that all youths have equal access to appropriate bathrooms. And by the way, we found out before this meeting that there is no single-sex bathroom, non-gender bathroom, in this building, so anybody that needed to use that in this building would not be allowed to because there's not one, so they would have to go out of the building, across to another building, somebody would have to open the door. That's not equal access. I know if the policies proposed tonight... I know if the policies proposed tonight are approved, you won't stop here. My concern and real fear is where these policies will lead next, and how much harm that you will do to LGBTQ students, their families and friends, and school employees who care about them. And by the way, someone beat me to it, but today is National Coming Out Day, and I want to let our LGBTQ youth, LGBTQ plus youth know that you are seen, you are worthy, and you're loved.
Thank you, Ms. Lehman. Next on our patron comments list is Ms. Cindy Webb.
Wish you could cure shortness, but, you know, I'm just referring to the microphone here. My name is Cindy Webb. I am a lifelong resident of Conway. I am also a business owner here in Conway, and I also, like Tammy Marsh, graduated from Conway High School in 1990. Well, our gears are a little bit different, not much, but anyway. First of all, let me say, thank you, every single one of you on the board, for taking time and sacrificing so much time of yours to let me speak, to let everyone else speak. This has been so hard on each and every one of you, I know it has to have been, so thank you. And I have to say, coming from a family of educators, I know how much pressure teachers and administrators are under. They have so much more on their backs, or is expected of them, other than their job description. And that's, I've never thought that was fair. I mean, my mom's job didn't end until 10 o'clock at night sometimes, and for what they make, that's not fair. And I have to say, of course, I absolutely support your policies. I think that it's extremely important that we keep our kids safe, no matter what. And I made a comment after last month's meeting on the Log Cabin Democrats article, and someone replied and said, "You're afraid of something that's imaginary." And it was meant to be derogatory, but I have to say, I can imagine a lot, but it is the thing that I can't imagine that scares me the most, and that is what we're putting ourselves up against if we don't pass this policy. So, something to think about there. Another thing that I was told earlier today, and I happen to know is true, our current president, Biden, has announced that if you're a transgender woman, which means you were born a man, you are required to register for the draft when you turn 18 years old. Trans men are excluded. What does that say about our current sitting president's view on this topic? I think it speaks for itself. And I have to address this, Dr. Naylor brought it up at the end of the last meeting, no one had addressed the books, and we had some pictures or excerpts that were passed around, and I have researched them a little bit. I kind of felt bad that I was going to be actually arrested by the FBI by finding out about child pornography, and what is and isn't legal. But the two books, Gender Queer and Wait What, are just child pornography, as it is defined by the current laws, especially the first one, Gender Queer. I don't think that's in Conway Public Schools Library, but I know it has been in one of the public schools' library in Arkansas. It depicts two young people under the age of 18, in acts that are not supposed to be performed by children, and then, not just children, I shouldn't say that, and then basically, we're reading about it, we're looking at it. We're not allowed to do that. We shouldn't. We shouldn't encourage kids to do that, and we certainly shouldn't be watching it and encouraging adults to watch with us. So I feel like, you know, when you turn 18, go do what you want to do, wherever it is that you do. But right now, every minor child is required by law to be in school, and it is our job to protect those minor children from anything, whether it is violence, or just someone grooming them to be something that they're not. So I thank y'all for letting me speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Webb. Before our last speaker comes, before Senator Jason Raper comes, I just want to say that after Senator Raper comes, we're going to, at that point, give our board an opportunity to make comments, or they may have some questions or something like that. And so, at this time, we're going to ask that Senator Jason Raper, if you would please come, sir.
Thank you for having me here tonight. I appreciate your service, and to be respectful of the time, I'm going to keep my comments to written comments. Tonight, you're voting on truth, not just policy. I'm here tonight to support the Conway School Board, taking responsible and appropriate action by supporting the two proposed policies before you. My wife and I actually moved to Conway, Arkansas, in 1990. We've been a part of this community for 32 years. We built our entire lives here. We raised our children here, built our business here, we attended church here, served on the Board of the Conway Chamber of Commerce, many boards, volunteered at many organizations, and my wife taught at Ida Burns Elementary, right here for the Conway School District. I've been elected four different times to serve in the Arkansas State Senate since 2010, and in 2012, my entire Senate district was redrawn, and since that time, I've represented the entire city of Conway, Arkansas, now for over a decade. I have represented this city, worked on many city and school-related issues during my time here, and I was elected by the majority of the people that have also elected each of you who serve on the school board. I believe I have a very good understanding of who our community is and what they support. The overwhelming majority of people in Conway, Faulkner County, and the state of Arkansas still believe the settled science that has been without question for thousands of years, frankly, since the beginning of time itself. God made males and females, and we appreciate and recognize the differences between the two sexes. And the overwhelming majority of people in this community support the Conway School District, adhering to those facts in your policies, your rules, and your regulations. We cannot ignore the horror stories, one that's been mentioned that I have in my comments that we've heard about related to the transgender political movement. Namely, I think of the situation in Virginia, where a student who claimed he was a girl sexually assaulted a student at a school there. He assaulted the girl after entering a girl's bathroom facility wearing a skirt. That horrible incident became national news, when the father of the girl who was assaulted confronted the school board members, demanding accountability for the fact that the school board put his daughter in harm's way unnecessarily. What you're doing here tonight will hopefully prevent the same horror story from occurring right here in Conway Public Schools. By passing these two common sense policies, you are doing what is right and standing up for the truth. America is indeed a free country. People have a right to their opinions and beliefs, but all of us are also free to reject the lies being spread about sex and gender, so we can protect our young students from those who seek to force their ideas and opinions and beliefs on everyone else. Our state legislature has taken a stand to protect our young people by passing legislation preventing minor children from being mutilated by sex change surgery and drug therapy meant to morph young boys to appear as girls and vice versa. There is so much that I could say to you here tonight, but I leave you all with the words of a very well-respected doctor and scientist who took a stand based upon scientific fact. Dr. Paul McHugh, the distinguished service professor of psychiatry at Johns Hopkins University, and former psychiatrist-in-chief for Johns Hopkins Hospital, who studied transgendered people for 40 years, said it is a scientific fact that transgendered men do not become women, nor do transgendered women become men. All such people, he explained in an article he wrote, become feminized men or masculinized women, counterfeits or impersonators of the sex with which they identify. His words, not mine. He said it is scientifically impossible to change a man... He said it is scientifically impossible to change a man into a woman or a woman into a man. All people are doing through this misguided transgender therapy is creating a masculinized female or a feminized male. This is why the horror story in Virginia happened, and this is why you have the ability tonight to be the adults in the room, the leaders in our community, and do the right thing by protecting our students from a situation that could haunt them for the rest of their lives. If a small percentage of parents or students demand to say we are all wrong and they're right, they're free to their own opinions, but their opinions do not change facts. Just because people get loud and demand we support their opinion does not change the truth or the facts. God made males and females, and the Conway School Board is doing the right thing here tonight. And I want to say on this coming out day that God loved every one of these kids more than anybody else here, even before they were formed in the womb.
Thank you, Senator Raper. At this time, I just want to take this opportunity to thank all of our patrons who came up before the board and presented, not only tonight, but even last month, September. We've been getting all of your emails, all of your emails, all of your phone calls. We've gotten every single one of them. And so, this is a sensitive topic. It's been a very sensitive topic. It's been a very passionate debate, discussion. And so, at this time, we're going to give the board an opportunity to make whatever comments that you all have. I want to give you a chance to say what's on your heart, okay? So, Ms. Hargis, I guess I'll just let you go first, if that's okay.
I really don't have anything further to say than I said last week. I appreciate everybody that came and spoke tonight, everybody that came and spoke last night. And, you know, at this point, the only thing I know to say is that I, as well as this board, care about every single student in this school district, every single one of them. And we are trying really hard to accommodate all of them. And I say that from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
May I go, Andre?
Sure.
Okay. I don't have a whole lot to say about this issue, but I think we can all agree, the bathrooms and bedrooms are personal and private spaces. And I do agree with Ms. Hargis that all children have a right to feel safe and comfortable in our schools. And, you know, just because we disagree with someone, we've got to learn as a society, is that doesn't mean we don't care about one another. We absolutely care about one another. In fact, I wanted to say, Cade, you are absolutely welcome at Conway Public High School. And if you're ever bullied, or you're ever mistreated, you come get us, and we'll address it. That's not our intentions with this policy. The policy is just to accommodate everyone. And I know that some people won't agree when I vote for this policy, but that truly is our intent. We're really trying to make everyone feel comfortable. For example, we don't allow adults to go into our elementary school bathrooms. We certainly don't allow adults to stay nights overnight with our children. And that's not to say that all adults are pedophiles. It's simply just to say that kids might not feel comfortable with someone twice their size, you know? And so, that's really my heart in this, is I appreciate everyone's comments, I really do. And I'm really soaking and absorbing all this, but on some of these comments that were made, I just simply agree to disagree. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Leach.
Yeah, I've just got a quick comment here. So, I spent an entire month or more doing what we said we would do. It's a read. So, went through, considering everything. I spoke to members of the community individually, all kinds of things. And one of the things I kept hearing over and over is suicide rate. And that's just tragic, regardless of what we're talking about here. But one of the things I kept running into is that the suicide rate of transgender individuals is more than just restroom usage. Eighty-two percent of transgender individuals, regardless of restroom usage, have considered suicide, and over 40% have actually attempted it. This is a much larger issue than what we're talking about here. So, I just, I wanted to say that, and I wanted to let everyone know that this has been something that's taken up a lot of our time, because it has been a consideration on all points. So, it's not just a, hey, we're coming in here trying to do this thing. It's a consideration for accommodation for everyone. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Senator. Dr. Naylor?
Yes, I just want, first off, again, to thank everybody that came and spoke. I appreciate all the emails. Most of them were very sincere. They were not bullying. They were not pushy. They were just stating their ideas and what they thought about these policies. And hey, I appreciate that. I appreciate, we, all the students that have been here. I appreciate all the teachers that have been here. It's a public meeting, and I really appreciate you guys. We have ex-board members here. I appreciate them. We have people from the city, the public. I appreciate Mr. Beckett and Mr. Cullen, because they've worked a lot over the last month, and the rest of our administration. You know, they've touched on all this. This is a touchy subject. You know, do I think, we had a student last month, who both mom and dad presented up here. Do I truly worry about him, or that student in the bathroom? No. But, but, we represent all students here. So, we have to look at all students. We can't look at one or two. We represent everybody. So, this is a tough decision. It's been, you know, the last month, I feel like the board has done a really good job of looking into this and taking every side. And we've had some, a lot of discussion about this. Correct, Mr. Ack? And, you know, it's just time for us to vote on the policy. I did want to ask, Mr. Cullen, because I've gotten a lot of emails about it, what are we, what is our current, what are we currently doing at the high school the last few years with this policy, non-policy, as far as restrooms?
Yes, sir. My understanding has been, for the past several years, they've been able to make accommodations for the students to use, either it's, could be a staff restroom at times, or it could be a single-use, what they call a single-use restroom for these students. And so, they've been accommodating for the last over five, six years, to my knowledge.
I've gotten several questions on that. That's why I asked, for the publics. And again, I think that's all I've got to say. And again, I appreciate all of Conway. Whether I agree with you, or you agree with me, or you don't agree with me, I do appreciate you being involved in our school district. A lot of us have grown up here. We bleed blue, and we love this district.
All right. Thank you. I really don't have a lot to add to this particular topic. I'm just going to say this. And hear what I'm saying. This board is represented by zones, okay? We didn't put ourselves up here. You put us up here, okay? So, so, listen to what I'm going to say here. Listen to what I'm going to say. So, what I'm saying is, is that the will of this board is representative of the will of the community. We're going by what you tell us. When I ran 2010, 2015, and we've had some highly contested races, you know, you put me up here. And so, when we, when we go out to the community, we want to know, you're letting us know how you feel about certain things. And so, the will of this board represents the will of this community. And I hope you understand what I'm saying. So, that's where we're coming from with this. So, at this time...
Andre, yeah, I think Jennifer liked talking. And can I make one more comment?
Sure.
Before you close this out? I apologize, board. There's one more thing I wanted to say, and I forgot, but it's important. It's very important, especially to me. The last thing I'll say about this topic is that, you know, as community members, we all have values, and some of us believe those values are sacred. We have life experiences that shape us. And sometimes those values and life experiences, they don't line up, right? And so, that's why we have to, in those instances, find compromise. A compromise that will respect all values and respect all life experiences. And I do believe this policy does that. And so, that was the last thing I just wanted to say. Sorry, Jennifer. Now, you may go.
So, I just want to thank you guys, my fellow board members, because we all together have come as a group, and we've spent hours and hours just discussing this. I know that on our own, individually, we have really dug deep, right? We've just dug deep on these policies. I do believe these policies are in the best interest of all students. They protect all students and staff. Unless somebody has another question for Jay or a comment?
I'll just add, and Mr. Beckett, I appreciate you coming up, just to speak to some questions that came up about the 30-day read as opposed to a 28-day read. That's not a law. That's not even a policy. That's a practice. And the intent is to give you time between each board meeting to be able to review this information, gather input, which I think you have done very well. I want to applaud you guys for the process that you've gone through. You've heard from several speakers personally. You've taken hundreds of emails. And so, I think as a board, you have stopped and considered the opinions of this community. But we wanted to clarify that, and Mr. Beckett's here to answer any final questions on the policy. And if there aren't any specifically, then I think it's before the board for approval.
Can you hear me now? All right, great. So, I just wanted to say that the development of these policies has been driven by the board's very robust, thorough, and highly professional discussion of all issues on all sides of these policies. So, with that, unless you have further questions of me, I think it's appropriate for the President to call for a motion.
And I just want to add that there were over 1,800, there were over, I want to add that there were over 1,800 signatures on a petition that supported these policies, I believe, if that's, so at this time, board...
Andre, can I make the motion?
Yeah, and I do have one quick question for Jay, if that's okay. Jay, is there any law in Arkansas that prohibits us from making this policy?
No.
There's no law that prohibits this?
No.
Okay. Is this policy clear to understand in your professional legal opinion?
Yes.
And is it practical to implement?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Board, I need a motion to adopt Policies 4.20, Use of Bathrooms Affected by Gender, and 4.56.2, Assignment of Roommates While Traveling Overnight on Trips As Presented.
So moved.
Need a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as hell. At this time, at this time, excuse me.
No, ma'am. No, ma'am.
Excuse me.
No, ma'am.
Excuse me. We've been doing pretty good. At this time, we're going to move right along on our agenda. I call for our board financial report from our chief financial officer, Ms. Robin Keen.
Good evening, board members. Tonight, I will be presenting the financials as of September 30th, 2022. At this time, 25% of our fiscal year has elapsed. As you will see on this first slide, this is a slide of all of our fund balances. The first table includes our revenues and expenses for just the month of September, and then the bottom table lists all of our expenditures and revenues year-to-date. We have an ending fund balance of all of our funds of a total of $19,789,459. On the next slide, we have a revenue and expenditure report. Looking at our revenue for our property taxes, year-to-date, we have received $3.4 million. That is 6.62% of our budgeted revenues for property taxes. And if, looking back at the previous years, that's right in line with what we received last year. Our state revenue, year-to-date revenue, $10.7 million. That's about 23% of our budgeted state revenue budget, or state, yes, state revenues. And the other local revenue, we've received a little over $200,000, and that's about 30% of our budgeted revenue for other local revenue. So, total at this time, we've received about 14% of our budgeted revenue, our operating revenues. For expenditures, salaries and benefits, year-to-date encumbrances and expenditures, $9.4 million. That's about 12% of our budgeted expenditures for salaries and benefits. Again, that falls in line with what we typically run at this point. Supplies and services, $11.6 million, and that's about 89%. And I know that seems high at this point, but that does include our encumbrances as well. Debt service, $1.8 million, which is about 20% of our budgeted expenditures for debt And then moving to our last slide, this is a multi-year comparison, comparing the data that I just shared for '22, '23, also the actual for '21, '22, and '20, '21. Again, we are trending in the same with all of our percentages with revenue and expenditures to date. Any questions on the financials?
I don't have a question, Robin, but just comment. You're doing a great job. I love your calming demeanor. That's what you want with a finance person. You don't want some of your jittery, talking about finances. But you're doing a great job, so...
I'm just nervous on the inside.
No, you're doing great. You're doing great.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Keen. All right, let's see. Next on our agenda is Mr. Lynn.
Good evening. Back in August, the district received two challenges on books that were located in the junior high, Conway Junior High Media Center. And so, what that did when we received those challenges, we had to implement the procedures that are outlined in Policy 5.7, which is the Collection Development Policy, Material Selection and Adoption. And this is the policy that applies specifically... And this is the policy that, um, applies specifically to the books that are found in all of our district's, uh, libraries, K-12. So, that's the policy that was referenced here. Part of that policy deals with challenged materials. And so, when that, uh, when that, when that, when that challenge was, um, or those, those challenges were presented to the, the building, uh, we, we began that process. And basically, what that process is, is that, uh, for each book that was challenged, we establish a committee of, uh, folks to review those, review each book. That committee consists of, per our policy, a central office administrator, the building-level principal, uh, from the building where the book is, is located, uh, the building-level library media specialist, uh, we get a teacher from that building, and when else, we also get a, uh, parent from that building, uh, to serve on that committee. And it's not the parent that makes the, that files the, the, the question. We get a, we get someone else. So, uh, what, what we did over the last couple of months is that we had to get copies of, of the books for all of our committee members. And, um, each committee member, uh, that was, that, that, uh, that, that served for us, uh, they read each book, and, uh, depending on which committee they were on, they read the book in its entirety. And then, the committee did meet to discuss, um, whether or not, you know, the book, whether or not they would recommend that the book stay in the school library, or would they recommend that it be removed from, from the school library. Um, I'm gonna share with you, uh, the findings of those committees, along with some rationale as to why they, they're making the proposal that they are making. Um, our policy does state that the final decision would be reached by the Board of Education, and that the decision of the committee salvaged, subject to the approval of the Board of Education. So, that means is, um, you guys, as, as the board have a final say, uh, that you can accept the committee's recommendation, or you can go in another direction if you, uh, so choose. So, that's, that's kinda how this, how this process works. So, the two books that were reviewed, uh, by the, by the two different committees at the junior high were Beyond Magenta by Susan Cucklin and Felix Ever After by Case and Calendar. For Beyond Magenta, the committee, uh, made the recommendation that the book remain in the library for the following reasons. They felt that the book was factual, since it was written in interview format. They felt like the terminology used was, was relevant to the vocabulary used to describe transgender youth. They felt like the book expanded the depth and breadth of the reader. They felt that the book was useful for readers who may need to identify with someone like them. Basically, the, the comment that was made, a student could find themselves in a book. And they felt that the book fit with the library standard of understanding inclusiveness and respect for diversity in the learning community. For the book Felix Ever After, the committee makes, um, the same recommendation that the, the book, uh, be allowed to remain in the library based on the following, um, the following, uh, comments where, uh, that the committee felt that the book was relatable to all readers. The committee felt like all the, all the challenges that the main character experienced could be similar to what teenagers face every day. They felt that the book would allow readers to, to have a sense of worth and to dispels, and to dispel any self-doubt. Uh, the ALA, the American Library Association, does recommend this book for secondary-age students, and they felt that the book fit with the library standard of understanding inclusiveness and respect for diversity in the learning community. So, um, as we implemented, uh, the tenets of Policy 5.7, these are the recommendations of our building committees.
Do we have a representative from the committee here?
Mr. Colton? I think we do.
That can speak? Cause I'm sure the board's gonna have lots of questions.
Yes, sir. I believe we do. I think Dr. Woosley is here. Can answer any questions for the board?
Uh, Dr. Woosley was the central office representative on the committee.
Thank you, Board.
Hey, Dr. Woosley. Thank you for spending the time. We appreciate it. Uh, you drew the short stick on this, it seems like. So, I've got a little bit that I want, I'm gonna bring to you. And I want you to read, please, ma'am, this paragraph, and then we're gonna reuse this page. That's out.
Okay. This one, um, Dr. Neller, does not come out of Magenta. This one does.
Yes. This one comes out of the Felix.
Okay. Oh, this one's out of Felix. It's just missed. Okay. Okay, thank you.
It's out. I appreciate it.
"I was sexually mature." What I mean by sexually mature is that I knew about sex. "From six up, I used to kiss other guys in my neighborhood, make out with them, and perform oral sex on them. I liked it. I used, used to love oral. And I touched their you-know-whats. We were really young, but that's what we did."
And I, I, I'm sorry. I, I'm, I do wanna say now, this, this was, I should've announced this before. This next page is very explicit. So, if you don't feel comfortable saying the word, you can say D or whatever, because it's, it's very explicit. So, I wanna make sure in the, the public that we understand this before we read.
All right. Go ahead, Dr. Woosley.
"Because you have a dick." What's a dick? I didn't know that, what that was. "Boys have dicks and girls have pee." Well, that's a pee. A vagina. Vagina? I didn't know, even know how to say the word. No vagina. Oh, okay. Then he said, "So, you're not a girl. You have a D." Well, that's okay. "What is a D?" "That thing you have between your legs." And I'm like, "I thought everybody has that." No, not everybody has that. I thought this man was, is crazy. "A lot of people didn't approve of me. My neighbors cursed at my family. We're raising an effin' bit boy. He's supposed to be wearing effin' boy clothes and not effin' girl clothes." You.
And I apologize, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but we, I'm getting emails all the time of, like, I'm trying to ban Huck Finn. And that's, that's not what I'm doing. I was very vocal at the last meeting a month ago. And so, obviously, to get the point to the public and let them see what's in these books. This is what's in the books, guys. That's what's in the books. So, again, I understand the uncomfortable position I put you in having to read that, but you were on the committee, and again, you recommended these books go back on the shelf in the eighth and ninth grade, and I don't agree with that decision.
Can we ask questions?
Did you not have any problem at all, especially with the language? And is it Felix Ever After for 13-year-old kids?
No problem. Ms. Hargis, as our policy states, this is a committee's consensus, and so, this is the committee's recommendation.
Who, I'd like to ask, who established the committee? Who put the committee together? Who put the committee together? Who established it?
The policy says that the principal of the building will choose the committee, um, and then there was discussion with, with he and I.
Was it a diverse committee?
It was a very, it was a very diverse committee.
Board, if I, Dr. Woosley, did you have to bifurcate between the two books? Or did you guys read them together? Did you discuss them together? Or did you bifurcate the two as you went through the process? How did that work?
Thank you, Mr. Colton. That's a great, great question. Um, we provided the books to the committee members, and they read them. And then, we set a date so that they would know when we need them to be finished. This was two different committees. Each book was a different committee. Uh, the only, uh, people that were the same were me and the principal. And, um, then, I explained the policy to them, what Mr. Lynn shared with you, the five criteria that we're supposed to review for challenge, uh, for a challenge that's brought before us. And I left the floor up for discussion. And then, after that, um, I asked for concerns or other discussion, and then the consensus of both committees was to put the books back on the shelf.
Dr. Woosley, so, one of the comments on the report said that, um, so I'm guessing the consensus doesn't mean everybody agreed, but, um, that it, it was relatable to all children. Do you feel comfortable commenting on that? If you don't, that's fine, but I, I'm just curious, kinda, the, the, why, why the committee thought it would be relatable to all children?
I would like to speak on that. It wasn't to all children. It was relatable to any children that chose that book in the library to read it.
Okay.
Mr. Leach, I misspoke. The, the words from the committee were, the committee thought the book was relatable to readers.
Okay.
Students who chose to read the book.
Okay.
Woosley, um, how did you, did the principal select the, uh, person from the central office? Or who, who picked you? Not picking, again, just, I'm trying to figure out the process.
Part of my job is K-12 media, library media.
Okay. Right. So, but when, when the committee is made, did you volunteer to be on the committee? Did somebody nominate you to be on the committee? Did the principal say, "Hey, I'm gonna get Dr. Woosley on the committee"? Are you always on the committee? Or does it change?
Well, if we, if we want to keep the, the committee with, this process and have integrity in the process from here forward, cause I, I really doubt this will be the last time we do this, um, you know, we do need one central person to do it. I was asked, um, since I am over K-12 library media, and I said that I would be happy to do that.
But you will be the point person, I'm saying, from the central office going forward?
As far as I know, yes, sir.
I'd just like to say, I'm an avid reader. I read a lot of books. I read all types of genres. Um, I read two stories out of Beyond Magenta yesterday, and I had to put it down. I, it, it was, it was filth.
Board, I just wanted to explain, as far as process goes, and, uh, Mr. Beckett, if I'm incorrect, please weigh in. Um, tonight, as you consider the recommendation, you've got a couple of options, kinda like you would with any policy. Um, you can accept the recommendation of the committee. You can deny the recommendation of the committee, or you can table the recommendation of the committee, uh, and bring it back at a subsequent board meeting. You have all three of those options. Um, it is an information item tonight. If you decide to take action, the board would simply need to make a motion to move it to an action item, first, um, just so that you know. And then, second, you know, make a motion based on whatever action you wanna take. So, process-wise, those are the next steps. If there's any questions about that. Mr. Beckett, is that, is that accurate? Okay.
I don't, I don't know that this is a question. Parents have absolutely no say in their children reading those books in that public, in that library, do they?
Actually, Ms. Hargis, no, that's not correct. If they want to have a conversation, and it's, as a matter of fact, in the, uh, library Bill of Rights, it recommends that parents have conversations with their children about what they choose to read. Now, what you are correct by is that we, as school employees, cannot look at a child and say, "Oh, you can't check that out." We don't have a right to do that.
But these are 13-year-old kids that don't listen to their parents anyway. I, I just, um, I don't know. I would have a problem with my 13-year-old reading those books. But that's, that's me.
Uh, Board, I do have a comment on this, um, this situation. I, I speak as also a parent. You know, I have four kids in the district, um, high school, um, junior high, middle school, elementary. So, we got all of them covered. And I agree with Linda. I do not believe, I would not want my, my children reading these books. But really, I think the larger issue is that, as Americans, we, we entrust our schools to educate our kids. And our education shapes the hearts and minds of our children, but not in all areas, okay? Math, science, history, these type of subjects for years and years have been the primary focus of our school districts. And that is what our parents have given, uh, the schools rights. Sexuality and sex is not one of them. That is a private matter. I believe it's a private matter that should be dealt in the privacy of a home. And, um, that's, that's really all I have to say about it.
Hey, Dr. Woosley, I just wanna say, um, also, it seems like we're getting caught up in this being a transgender book. And I just wanna put it out there that if this is a heterosexual book, I'm still against it. It doesn't have anything to do with it being a transgender book. It has to do with the language and the material on a eighth-grade person checking, looking at this book without, without parental guidance. And so, again, if this is a heterosexual book, I have the same stance as this one.
I agree.
So, I, Board, do you have any more questions? I would like to make the motion that we take this as an action item.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. And then, next would be to take whatever action is recommended by the board.
And then, I'll make the motion to deny the committee's recommendation.
Second.
And to pull the books.
Need a second?
Second, yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Board, we have a few personnel recommendations, elections. And so, I need a motion to approve the personnel recommendations as presented.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Personnel recommendations are, uh, accepted. So, at this time, uh, I just wanna thank all of you for your attendance tonight. Thank you for, uh, being courteous and kind. Let's be kind to one another. Let's, listen to this. And some of you'll get it, some of you'll get what I'm about to say. Be kind to one another. Tenderhearted. Encourage one another. Lift each other up. That's what we've been doing. And that's what we wanna continue to do. So, at this time, uh, the board will now go into executive session to discuss the appointment of a new board member. Thank you. All right. We're back into session. Um, Board, I need a motion to appoint Mr. Bill Milburn, Bill Milburn, as board member for Zone Five, Position Three, to serve until the annual school election following the appointment, at which time, a member will be elected in the usual manner to serve the remainder of the unexpired term.
So moved.
Need a second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
And Mr. Ackland, that's for, that's for basically a six-month term, correct? And then, the public gets to pick, um, who the next member is in May?
Right. That's about for, for six months, he'll be appointed. And then, uh, at the May election, he'll have to re, rerun, uh, to hold that seat. Yeah. Any other questions? Need a, I need a motion to adjourn?
Oh, wait, Andre. Uh, we need to rearrange our officers, and we need to appoint a delegate, I believe. Is that in order? Oh, okay. Okay. Oh, okay. All right. Hey. Ah, gotcha. Perfect. Sorry.
So, we'll do that.
Yeah.
We'll do that in November.
Okay. Gotcha.
I need a motion to adjourn. Second?
Aye.
All right. All in favor, say aye.